Call the meeting order, please. We'll have our pledge tonight.
Roll call, sir.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Power, here. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bogencore?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
You'd like to invite the senior adult pastor, Ray White, from the Tatchee Church in Nazarene, to offer a invocation tonight? Welcome, sir. Mayor Bio, please rise.
Shout out my prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence this evening here at this city council meeting. Lord, we are grateful and thankful for those that have been called to serve this wonderful community of Tatchee. Now, Lord, we pray that they ask for your wisdom to tackle any issues that come up that might be a little more difficult than usual. And, Lord, we pray that you'll give them the grace to come across and take the best solutions for our community. And moreover, Lord, we pray that we will have unity throughout this evening, so we can give you the glory in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask Councilmember Susan Wiggins if she'd offer her.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and not contribucial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If common or discussion is irked by anybody, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and listed in sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have anybody in the audience would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? I've seen that. Uh, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bogencore?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Audience oral written communications. Uh, do we have any emails or?
We do have Abby Lanick from Bakersfield with California Policy Center. If you can come up, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Abby Lanick. I have met a few members of, um, the city council that I, informally, but I thought that I would use this as an opportunity to formally introduce myself. I'm the current regional director of the California Policy Center. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan research center, think tank, and advocacy center, and we're pretty new to Kern County and the Central Valley. So I have just been, um, going around the county and introducing myself to local community leaders. We stand for conservative-minded, common sense legislation. We believe in making California a better place for families to live and businesses to thrive, and we believe that, um, our policy and our priorities would align a lot with those here in the Tatchee community, so I just thought I would use this as an opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Development Services Director reports.
There we go. I'll make that work, I think. Thanks. I feel really official. All right. Very good. Good evening, mayor, council members. Uh, the first item I have for you is the award of the Tatchee Boulevard fence, uh, project, uh, bike lane fence project. So, uh, the city of Tatchee, uh, just a quick reminder, RDA redevelopment agency funding, uh, this is a, this is a funding source that the city had years ago that was tax increment based funding, um, that, uh, that the city used a lot of those funds for revitalization of the downtown. The state of California removed those funds a number of years ago. They resulted in some leftover funds available for use within specific zones within the city defined in the workout agreement we had with the state of California. Uh, so hopefully that rings a bell, at least with a couple of you that were around for a lot of that. So the final funds from the RDA leftover funds, um, we, staff has been, uh, looking for the right location, um, to utilize those funds. And in this case, the project identified was to construct a, a three rail wooden fence along the bike path that we constructed a few years ago on Tatchee. Here, here's a quick map of it, on Tatchee Boulevard between Hayes and the summit area. So hopefully you guys all recognize that bike path. We constructed the bike path, then we constructed a number of trees, or planted a number of trees in that area. Um, and now utilizing these funds, we'd like to construct a fence to separate railroad operations from that bike path, um, and to make it more comfortable for bicycle riders and, and to keep it cleaner. So, um, so staff produced that project and, and bid that project, uh, in November of 2023. Uh, we opened the bids for this project on January ninth of this year. The results of those bid is included in the staff report. We, we had an excellent, uh, bid turnout for that project. We prepared a responsiveness review in accordance with the public contract code, uh, reviewing the bids. We did determine that the Yukon Fence Company bid was responsive. It is also the lowest bid at two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, we budgeted in the twenty, you all approved the 2023-24 budget that included this project, that included the remaining RDA funds and traffic mitigation fee funds. Um, and we had estimated budget-wise that project to be about three hundred and fifty thousand total. So the bids came in well in accordance with our, our budgeting. And so tonight, I recommend that you award the Tatchee Boulevard Bike Lane Fence Project to Yukon Fence Company in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and sixty cents, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of ten percent of the original contract for twenty-seven thousand, four fifty-one, fifty-six. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Jay, is the fence on the north side of the bike path? So it's not gonna make it too squishy? When I heard that, I thought, oh, I'm gonna be.
It's right against the bike path. So to be clear, the city right of way, i- it's not clear, right? It just goes straight from the bike path into the dirt that is into the ballast that is the railroad track. So the, the city railroad line is one foot north of the asphalt edge of the bike path. So in that one foot sliver, we'll construct this fence. Um, so it will, it will, it'll make the bike path feel a little bit tighter than it is now with, because there's, you know, there's nothing on that side. Um, but it's safe, in our opinion, to do so. And frankly, the safety improvements of adding the fence, in our opinion, are superior to the alternative, which is to do nothing. Um, with the railroad, the way they maintain that property, and frankly, we've seen railroad employees utilize the path, and maybe you have, uh, with their vehicles from time to time, or they, uh, this time of year, they might run through some mud on their property and splash it onto the bike path, which is difficult for us to keep up with in terms of maintenance. It just, it's one more thing to add to the list. So this fence helps delineate the difference between the two. We have met with the railroad to work with them about making sure there are a few locations where they can pass vehicles through, um, on and off of the right of way to help improve that relationship and to keep everybody where they should be. So that's the goal.
Yeah, I can see the tire going off on the asphalt, right into the fence, but yeah, that's my concern, just accident.
Understood. Yeah, my opinion is, is yes, that that's a valid concern, but again, considering the items, the, the totality of the issues, I think this is an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have anybody from the public would like, uh, sorry, ask Jay any questions?
Yeah, the fence type would be, uh, the same that you see on the other bike paths that we have, uh, on Antelope Run or, or up on Tucker where ID four. So it's that, it's very traditional Tatchee. It's the, um, it's the three rail, uh, wood fence with the post every eight feet. Um, and, and we did, uh, make sure through the specification process to get the, the posts and rails that are properly protected against the elements, because you can buy kind of two different levels or multiple different levels of quality. So, um, so that quality is baked into the project to give us the longest life possible.
When would you start and how long would it take to finish?
Well, uh, if you approve the contract tonight, we, uh, we supply contracts tomorrow, meaning we'll mail out the award package. Um, the contractor, we start the clock on the project on the day of award. So tomorrow starts the clock. Um, you're, if you test my memory, I don't, I think it's a, do you remember, Don, how many days we gave them total? It's like, like one fifteen is what came to my mind, so one fifteen.
Contractor's ready to get started right now?
Yeah, they were calling us last week, sort of asking if they can order stuff, and we said, no, you've gotta get a contract first, but, um, so usually it takes them about two weeks to enter into a contract with us, and then we kick the project off. So, so three to four months.
Is there any underground utilities right there?
Could be. We will be, uh, USA to look for those. My knowledge is that they're actually under the path. They're not that close to the line.
Okay.
So we will, that could potentially change the timeline if we were to find a utility underground. We have the right to relocate it or to force the utility to relocate it. Franchise agreement allows us to do that, but that can take months sometimes, so.
As far as railroad utilities, they would not?
We are not aware, they shouldn't be. That would be in our right of way. Um, so we would have the right to move them in that case as well. But again, the, that type of hiccup could cost time.
And you said the railroad would have accessibility to, to drive through it, but still not be on the bike path necessarily?
Yeah, so, so perpendicular pass, pass through locations where they can cross our bike path into their right of way and stay on their side.
Anybody else? I just had one. Is the railroad gonna be able to, you said there are gonna be a couple of crossing points? They're not gonna be able to enter the bike lane and drive the whole bike lane all the way when it's muddy, which I have seen them one there.
Yeah. Never say never, right? I, and then the, uh, person with initiative, the wrong kind of initiative, can do just about anything they wanna do. But, um, at the ends of the bike path, at Dennison and at Hayes and at Stubber, there are strategically placed removable ballers.
Okay.
Um, that allow us to take them out when we need to get a vehicle down then, but they make getting onto the path difficult. The fence shouldn't, I think what we're getting a lot of is just it's convenient for them, so they're doing it. So the fence should eliminate all the convenience such that the only way they'll do it is if they really wanna do it. Um, and, and to be difficult, which I don't anticipate being a serious concern.
So where you put the crossing points, maybe that's where we oughta add some more bullets, so they can't come across the crossing point and turn onto the bike.
Absolutely. And that is, yeah, I think the selected locations were at, um, at Hayes, uh, Dennison. I think there's one at Bailey. There's a small opening there, but you definitely couldn't make a turn.
Okay.
Um, and then down at Stubber, there, right by the Pilot and Loves, all of those ballers that are right there are designed to be removable. That's a major access point, so they can get heavy equipment or trucks onto the railroad tracks. So we've, and again, we met with them, uh, uh, with their local operations person, talk about the problem, and to talk to them about this project, and, and they didn't voice, I mean, I don't think they love it, but they did not voice a strong objection, so.
Do we have any other questions?
Just one, just one bike that, some of the trees have leaves, some don't. Is that just the nature of the species?
Yeah, different species.
Okay.
Yeah, not aware of a problem. We'll see in spring.
All right.
But yes, don't, don't know the problem there.
All right.
If somebody entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Hold second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bogencore?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Public Works Director reports. Tyler?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Davies, City Council. Thanks for having me back again tonight. Uh, we have a, an item here that is, uh, some routine maintenance with a little bit of, uh, times of the essence for us here. Um, we planned on doing some maintenance and repair work on the Dennison well. Uh, the Dennison well itself is one of our oldest potable wells we have here in the city. It's at the corner of, uh, Anita and Dennison. You might see a little kind of concrete structure there on the side of the road. Um, been very reliable for many, many years, and to avoid any kind of catastrophic failure, you know, where just all of a sudden breaks, of course, on a Fourth of July or things like that, we, uh, worked with, uh, Bakersfield Well and Pump, and we budgeted to basically pull everything out of the well, pull all the pipe, the shaft, the tubing, everything out, um, do a full video and camera inspection of the well itself, and then analyze all the equipment we pulled out. And, um, not too much of our surprise, the equipment that was in there is about twenty-five to thirty years old, as far as we can gauge. Um, basically, it was at the point of, we're, we're lucky it was still running well, and it was doing very well for us. Um, but during that process, Bakersfield Well and Pump, and, uh, with utilizing a, uh, design engineer consultant through Provo's and Pritchard, uh, there was a, made a recommendation to replace everything, um, and then also reset the pump about four hundred feet lower. In, in addition to that, uh, the video inspection showed the well is in decent shape for a, for a very old well. Uh, it was producing very well, good water. Um, we did find a small damaged section of the casing, kind of near where the pump is. Uh, thankfully, at that point, though, we're not seeing any kind of debris or any kind of sand coming in there. It's just a, it's a little bit of an item that we'd like to take care of while we're there, right? It's very expensive to pull all the equipment out, so kind of one of those, while you're there, let's get it taken care of. So, uh, what you'll see there tonight is a couple proposals, uh, from Bakersfield Well and Pump. Basically, they're mobilization, demobilization, things like that, pulling all the equipment, uh, and a proposal for all new, uh, equipment to put back in there. So we worked with, like I said, we worked with Provo's and Pritchard to ensure that, uh, our pump contractor and engineer, we all came up with the best pump spec to maximize, um, the efficiency of the well there. Um, in addition to that, the, the motor's in good shape, because that's above ground, right? You can easily service that, so the motor's gonna get shipped off and rebuilt to, uh, hopefully give us a decade or so more life out of that well itself. So, um, with that, staff recommends the city council approve the proposals from Bakersfield Well and Pump for the total cost of a hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars, and authorize the city manager to approve any change orders with a maximum of ten percent of the total amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. So with that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Do we have any questions from the public on this item? Uh, council?
Is this the well that serves Ash Village?
This well serves all, all of our community. All of our wells pump, uh, to the tanks, and then the water is distributed from there, so.
But is there a separate well over in Ash Village?
There used to be. Part of that project years ago was that well was deemed non-potable due to nitrate issues.
Right.
That well was turned over to the Tatchee Cummings Water District, and they use that for, uh, blending and production and things like that. So, yeah, we have nothing to do with that area.
That's that well, okay. Just clarifying.
Yeah, this one's a little bit further south of that area.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't have a question, just to comment. You know, it's always better to have preventative maintenance, good job on preventative maintenance than having to deal with catastrophic situation, because you, you can't do anything with water.
Yeah, and the goal was to do, well, it's freezing cold outside, right? We're not in super high demand for water right now. So, um, timeline wise, we get this approved, we should have everything back in order, up and running within a couple of months.
Yeah.
Um, back online, flush, sample, everything, so.
Fantastic catch.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tyler.
Sixty days is like a long time.
Yeah, it feels, for a water guy, it feels like forever, so. Uh, but I think it should go pretty quick.
We have a motion?
Motion on that strike foundation.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bogencore?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll swap, item thirteen, I'm sorry. Item thirteen.
All right, we're tag teaming this tonight. So, uh, thank you, Mayor Davies, and council members. The item I have before you tonight, um, is for, uh, twenty twenty-four and twenty-five paving projects. So, uh, as I hope you've noticed, the, the city of Tatchee has been doing a lot of, of roadwork over the last few years. So we own and maintain a hundred and sixty-three lane miles of paved roads within the city. That's about ten point three million square feet of asphalt. Uh, over the past three years, the city has made significant investment in preserving, repairing, and rehabilitating these streets. Uh, as you can see from the table, uh, we've spent a lot of money, uh, averaged about one point three million dollars a year on paving work. Uh, that is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand average per year of general fund money. So a, a substantial amount of investment on that. Uh, the work that we've done in the last three years has significantly improved the overall condition of more than thirty-nine miles, uh, of, um, asphalt, and that equates to about two point five million square feet, um, of paved roads. Even with this aggressive effort, that only equates to about twenty-five percent of all of our asphalt in the city. So made great progress in a short amount of time, but we have a, a lot of work left to do. In, uh, November, city residents overwhelmingly, November of twenty twenty-two, city residents overwhelmingly passed Measure S, uh, and through several surveys indicated that one of the top priorities for residents was maintaining city infrastructure, specifically roads. Based on this direction, uh, from residents and the success of paving projects over the last three years, uh, city staff has prepared a two-year plan to leverage available grant funding, SB one and gas tax funds, and Measure S sales tax revenue to accelerate the existing pavement management plan. You can see the, uh, the table there for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five planned expenditures based on this plan. Um, so we're accelerating, uh, from three hundred and seventy-two thousand roughly of general fund money to, uh, over two million dollars per year of general fund, or in this case, Measure S money. So two point seven totaled all, two point seven million total dollars for twenty twenty-four and three point three roughly for twenty twenty-five. By executing these larger projects, um, we'll, we are able to leverage our experience with the last few years and, um, improve the, the pavement quality throughout town faster, but also maximize our available funds. Uh, it's much more efficient for us to get, uh, larger paving projects done. The, the dollars per square foot is a lot less, the bigger you go, con, more, bigger contractors get more interested, and things like mobilization costs and, um, the, the overall overhead, things like that get spread out amongst, um, uh, more areas, so it gets cheaper the bigger you go. Uh, the two years of planned work will improve an additional thirty-one miles of roadway, and that's about two, two million square feet of asphalt. Uh, we'll go through the, uh, uh, attached presentation in just a second, but regarding fiscal impact, uh, the, the impact to this year's fiscal budget is estimated to be three hundred and fifty thousand for engineering and design work. So our plan is to just do engineering design for the, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five projects this year, and then we will execute construction in this summer. We may start late July, depending on how fast we can get engineering done, or sorry, late June, uh, and then, but it will run into July and August for construction. And then, of course, the, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six project will be next summer, a year and a half from now. So let's go to the presentation. Um, we go to the next slide. This is a list of the streets and the, um, the planned budget. Uh, you can see the number there, two point seven, three million. Uh, if you go to the next few slides, there's, um, a map showing the locations, um, Tatchee Boulevard, F Street, basically the rest of F Street, what we have, had, had not done this year, uh, Robinson Street on the north side, or south sides, sorry, um, from, from Tatchee Boulevard, uh, south, and then Arabian and Appaloosa. Capitol Hills, uh, we will be doing some work to all of those that, uh, work is planned to be done with RSTP funds, a Regional Surface Transportation Program. It's grant funding. Uh, most of all of that asphalt work is actually slurry seal, but there's a fair amount of, uh, gutter work, uh, over there, curbing gutter for that area. There's, uh, a lot of those have been, have settled, trucks have run over them, um, it's a, it's a pretty big mess over there. And then, uh, grinding overlay work on Brentwood and Cherry Lane. And our plan is, uh, using the grindings from Brentwood, Cherry Lane, F, and Robinson, uh, our plan is to use those grindings in the alleys on the south side of town, uh, to, to do similar to what we did this year on the north side of the tracks. So we would, uh, repave those alleys with, uh, grindings from these paving projects. I don't expect to do all of those, so don't get, uh, too excited, but all the alleys won't be done. Uh, we'll, we'll decide, uh, as we get engineering progressed, is exactly how much we will be able to do. So that's for, uh, twenty-four coming up this summer. Um, next summer, twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, this is the list, again, three point three million dollars roughly. Uh, if you go to the next slide, shows the maps, uh, we will do, our plan is to do essentially, uh, the north side neighborhoods, uh, north side of the railroad tracks, H, I, and J, as well as all of the cross streets. And then Valley Boulevard from, uh, Beach to Tucker, that's a continuation of the project we did this year, and that's also using RSTP funds for that project. Curry, uh, a few blocks of Curry there, and a few blocks of Valley as well. And then the next slide shows Dennison Road, all the way from Georgia to Tatchee Boulevard, and then from, uh, Allen to the, the freeway. So, um, a lot of paving work, uh, do, uh, truly needed, um, and we're really excited about, uh, getting this work done and making a major shift change in how much work we can get done in a year. So staff's recommendation is that, uh, the city council authorize staff to proceed with the execution of this two-year paving project, uh, as presented, and authorize the execution of engineering and design work in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Just to be clear, the paving construction work will actually be in the next two-year budget, so you're, you're actually really authorizing the, the engineering work to proceed for this year. It's the only expense per se. So that's, uh, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions from the public? Uh, council?
I, I was just kind of shocked at the, uh, need for, uh, paving out at Capitol Hills area, because to me, it's not used that much, and it's relatively youthful compared to, you know, EF and, and D, so is it truck traffic?
As I mentioned, we're not actually paving those streets. We're doing a slurry seal, so that's a preventative, um, application. It's, uh, and it's, it's relatively cheap compared to paving. Uh, and it, the streets out there are, are in the perfect condition for a slurry that will help really extend the life of that. If we let them go too much longer, they'll get to the point where they're not, uh, savable, that, uh, the slurry won't be effective, but if we can catch them now, uh, that will really extend the life. It'll be much better.
Thanks. That's, I was wondering, because I don't know if those are the worst streets.
Yeah, no, it's not a, not a repave, just a preservation of the paving.
Susan?
The entire time I've been on the council, I've listened to people from Arabian Estates, and I told one of them the other day, I believe this is going to be on the agenda, and now I'm a hero. No, I had nothing to do with it.
It's all because of you.
But that has been such a concern for so long.
Yes.
And I don't usually go over there, but I have a couple of times, and it's, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a difficult one, because it doesn't get a lot of traffic.
Right.
But, um, uh, truthfully, the, the condition of the pavement warrants, um, doing some work over there. What we'll be doing, um, uh, we won't be grinding out the asphalt over there. We're actually gonna do just an overlay, so we're gonna take, uh, two inches of asphalt and lay it over the top of the existing asphalt.
And fill in the holes.
And, and fill in the holes, yeah.
One of us have been very good.
It's, um, it's in, uh, fortunately, the, the base there is in pretty good condition, and the fact that it doesn't get a lot of traffic will allow us to, to just do that.
So is it strictly truck traffic that causes that, or what's, is there, you said that, you know, it's really not? Yeah.
In, in Arabian?
Yeah.
Um, no, that's just local traffic, and where, honestly, a lot of that, too, is, uh, there's some drainage issues over there, so the water sits, and then, uh, deteriorates the asphalt. So we've done a lot of work to improve the drainage, and we'll try and do some more, uh, when we, when we do the paving as well, to help with degrade and, and get it to drain better.
Thank you. I'm just curious.[1786.71]
So we're engineering only this year?
Yes.
And not paving this year?
We'll be paving July, August, this summer.
Oh, so we are paving this year?
Next, next fiscal year.
Understood. Perfect.
Yeah.
So these, these folks are gonna be happy all around town, the, the areas that you're, that you're doing it for. On the alleys, are they gonna grind and overlay like they did on the north side?
Same thing, yeah.
Could explain?
Yeah. Yeah, so they come in, what we did this year is we, we come in with the grinding machine, grind out the alley, remove, uh, three inches of, of whatever's there, dirt or asphalt, remove that, and then a, as we grind, um, the other streets, grind the asphalt in the other streets, we take that directly over to the alley, lay that down and pave it with a paving machine, just like you would real asphalt.
With a roller.
Uh, and then we'll roll it, and then after that, we actually apply a treatment to it that helps, um, bind it and seal it up a little bit better than just straight grinding.
There's gonna be a lot of people happy. I know some of the alleys, uh, like on the north side, just, they're just dirt.
Yeah.
There's no, nothing.
They're, they're all basically dirt on the north side of the tracks.
It's nice that you can recycle the material there, so.
Yeah.
That's nice. Saves some money.
I'm happy with the whole of this.
Thank you.
Mayor Davis, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This is very, very exciting to me. Um, you know, some of these roads are fifty-plus years old, right? Right? Back in the day, there was not a lot of oversight, designs have changed, it, it, Capitol Hills, Arabian Estates, the alleys, so we're dealing with a lot of very old infrastructure. But, um, due to the leadership of Mr. Marsh and assistance from Jay, Andrew, and others, you'll recall that we, Don, uh, started studying our streets and roads and put together a matrix using Caltrans standards. What do we have, and what is it going to take to bring these streets and roads up to, you know, a, a higher standard, because they were deteriorating in front of our face, right, in front of us? And so Don has used some acronyms, RSTP, SB one, the Streets and Roads money, and, and that, that money fluctuates from year to year, sometimes it's every other year. And so with the matrix of, of understanding the condition of all roads and then creating a, we need to do something now, and we have a little time, and then we, we can, we can wait several years. So repaving, full re, rede, reclamation, um, paving on top of existing, maybe slurry seal, maybe fog seal, those sorts of things. We've been able to create a master plan, uh, with Hamed also, a financial plan, and it's, you, you gotta have cash, right? And so part of our tactic, uh, several years ago, was to go to the voters and say, listen, we need your help, we cannot do it with the amount of funding that is coming through to us, the revenues, right? And so the voters understood and they voted, you know, in favor of Measure S, it's a big vote of confidence, and we want to, we, we are delivering that. So the last two years, we've got a great start to, to refurbishing our streets and roads. And what we're asking for tonight, again, to be clear, is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to begin the design and the engineering for the next two fiscal years of this paving project. In our five-year budget that we will bring to you in May-ish, you'll be seeing these projects rolled into our budget. And then when we go to bid, then we'll bring them back to you for authorization to award the bids. But very exciting time, I think, for the city of Tehachapi, because our infrastructure is being maintained tighter, talk earlier about, you know, Dennison freshwater well, that's important, the timing is important. Jay's talking about fencing, we continue to invest in the quality of infrastructure and the quality of public safety in Tehachapi. So this is a very exciting time for us. So again, Don's recommendation is to authorize staff, I like read that, but we'll do that once again, but just tonight, we're authorizing, asking for permission to spend three fifty to design and engineer two summers with the paving projects. Thank you.
One last thing, come on. Are we gonna have a few billboards around town, like you see on the freeway? Your tax dollars are?
We actually talked about that.
I'm sure it is. So the people know that they voted for something?
But you know, we, we have, and I'll, I'll leave this to Key and Maya, we have an amazing communications department, um, that leverages all of those sorts of things, so we'll definitely be pushing it out, and we're gonna try to get the most bang for our buck with this, with this project. But only when we start, of course, we don't want to get everybody spun up, because, you know, prices are all over the board these days, but if we don't have it designed and engineered and ready to go to bid, then we'll lose that window. And as you know, we can only do this sort of work during the summer months.
Just to be clear, also, I think it goes without saying, but this, this is not the end. Once we get through these two years, we will continue, uh, paving work, uh, maybe not at this rate, but we will, there's certainly a lot more to do after this. So did you want me to read the recommendation again?
Yes, could you please?
So staff recommends that the city council authorize staff to proceed with the execution of the two-year paving projects as presented, and authorize the execution of engineering and design work for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
And I think we need to add the three hundred and fifty thousand, though, that's not written in that motion, so I guess that just needs to be stated when we make the motion.
At your discretion.
Yes, okay. All right.
So move.
Second.
Okay, our vote call vote, please.
Elton Burt Power?
Yes.
Elton Burt Smith?
Yes.
Elton Burt Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Boe from Boecon Court?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried, with the changes.
Mr. Garrett, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I wanted to briefly talk a little bit about, kind of, twenty twenty-three and maybe a quick snapshot for twenty twenty-four. So I wanted to start by saying, um, the city team is very well-trained, very dedicated, ready and willing to serve the citizens of Tehachapi at the highest level. We improve that every day, every day, from top to bottom, left to right. Our communications department has created a short, three-minute video highlighting twenty twenty-three, so I'd like to show that video real quick, it's just three minutes, if we could just roll that, it would be great.
As we kick off for twenty twenty-four, we want to take a look back at what the city of Tehachapi accomplished in twenty twenty-three. Our finance department received four awards for their work preparing the city budget and for financial reporting.
Our development services department served integral roles in planning of several large projects that improves the infrastructure of the city and new businesses and housing developments as the city continues to grow.
Our Tehachapi police department saw important changes in twenty twenty-three for the onboarding of, of new chief, the addition of new officers, and a restructuring of personnel. Throughout these changes, TPD remained a strong presence in our community.
Our public works department worked around the clock to maintain the city's infrastructure and to bring planning projects from development services to fruition, not to mention their endless efforts in keeping our streets clean and safe, our landscaping well-groomed, and the city beautiful.
Our administration, airport, and IT department covers a lot of ground in their day-to-day work, from being the front line of the city customer service, managing the Tehachapi municipal airport, running the farmer's market, to servicing the city's in-house IT staff. Our agency couldn't run without their dedication.
Our economic development and general government department is small, but mighty, from keeping a pulse on expanding commercial business opportunities, assisting new businesses get off the ground, to understanding how federal and state politics impacted us here locally.
Lastly, the communications department, we keep you informed on everything the city departments are working on as it's happening. We use multiple platforms to share our message, like our award winning podcast, social media pages, and engagement with the community at local events. Our goal is to be an open channel of communication from the city to the community we serve.
Thank you for your support, and here's to a great twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Maya. Key and I started talking about it, and Maya, and she just produced that, that quick, so.
Awesome.
By the way, that was me landing a citation jet, and the, how many friends of mine has one, so, uh, everyone's one will get to go to a thousand dollar lunch, or a ten thousand dollar lunch, so, but, uh, that was fun.
More hundred dollar burgers.
No more hundred dollar burgers, or ten thousand dollar burgers. Uh, in addition to that, uh, in, in no particular order, I'd, I'd like to share some of the twenty twenty-four department head goals, or our department goals for this year. Development Services, Jay's department, um, the planning department is working on a series of zoning and municipal code updates as required by law, state law, or is needed to improve our policies and procedures to make it a little more user-friendly for the residents, and so they can read and understand, uh, what's going on. We're delivering the largest budget and suite of capital projects in city history. Every year, it seems like we continue to be extremely successful, obtaining grants and budgeting, uh, city funds, combining those, and partnering with others, and just investing and maintaining or improving our infrastructure, so we're very excited with Jay and, and Andrew and his team. Uh, and then working with code enforcement to improve communications and effectiveness in how we deliver our service to, to the community. And then with Ash's department, which is administration, airport, and IT, bottom heart plate, uh, increased cybersecurity training, citywide. We talk about this a lot, we train a lot, we budget, we have budget, a lot of funds for this, but it's working. And, you know, knock on wood, because, you know, those, those, the guys that like to hack in, if you say, as I say, uh, not in, not as in hacky sack, but hack in and do a, do a bad thing, um, we can keep one step ahead of them, and we plan on continuing to keep one step ahead of them. And then, of course, our taxiway relocation and, and drainage improvements at the airport. It was on the video, uh, it's over seven million dollars at the end of the day, that's gonna make a world of difference with not only public safety, or airplanes passing in the night, taxing, whether it's taxing on the runway, landing on the runway, or taxing on taxiways, separation, greater separation, but also drainage improvements from end to end. So we're very, very excited about those improvements at the airport. And then our police department, of course, with our new chief, Sandridge, which we're extremely excited, he's making so many nice improvements to our police department, implementing a, a reorganization plan through promoting, promotion and hiring. We just tonight approved some amendments to, um, some of the employee, um, protocols and how we, you know, the, the, what's the? Job descriptions, thank you. We're looking at creating a, a city, um, city sector program, and that is where we would divide our city into sectors, and the sergeants would be the responsible party for those areas of town, and then the, the people, the citizens that live in that area, they have a, a single point of contact, let's say, instead of just calling the PD, uh, and who knows, you know, you'll get dispatched, and then you may get the sergeant, you know, on call, you'll actually have a name and a person that you can actually communicate with, so we're really excited about that. And then retail theft meetings with local businesses. As you know, retail theft in the entire state or country is on the rise, and it's a rotating door, uh, these, these, uh, these people are not kept in jail, if you will, and they're organized, they're coming up from the Yellow Valley or maybe Bakersfield, and they're, they're visiting our Walmart or Home Depot and leaving without paying, and so we have, we have some work to do there, so we want to continue to educate people. And then working with Jay's department, streamlining code enforcement and, and building inspection, sorts of things. And then with, uh, finance, with Hamed Jones, um, as you know, we had, um, Hillary, who was a hurricane, Hillary, and then tropical storm by the time it hit Tehachapi, but we did have a lot of damage over by our public works and Price Way. So Hamed and Cory are working with FEMA, and it looks like we're going to be providing some of the funds for the damages to that area, to our fencing, different things, but we're also working with them on a bigger scale. We don't want to call FEMA every time there's a damage, and they don't want us to call them either, so it looks very likely that we'll get some significant, significant funds to greatly improve that area drainage in, in Price Road, so we're really excited about that. And then, um, the finance department also is implementing NeoGov, which is HR software. So as we process employees, people coming in, we can advertise on a bigger platform if they're testing, the needs to take place, it's really streamlining our HR processes, so we're really excited about that. In the economic world, general government, Cory Costello, uh, continued support and expansion efforts of national and retail businesses. We invest a lot of time and money in recruiting the appropriate businesses, uh, corporate chains into, into our city, but in addition to that, we have a small business community that's extremely important to us. They are the backbone of our town, of our, of our country, and we have the signed grant program that you all approved some months ago, and that's getting some traction, so we're really excited about that, so supporting small businesses. And then, um, complying with the state laws when it comes to recycling, organics, those sorts of things, kind of taking it up, next meeting, we'll be having that discussion about third can and the requirements that the, uh, state of California has implemented. We've been working, Cory's been working many hours on this, uh, we've refined it such that it's gonna be as minimal impact as can be to the citizens of our city, uh, but that's, that's coming here soon. And then, uh, economic partnership opportunities, facilities and recreation, we want to continue those opportunities. As you all know, we're looking at a pickleball court here at the, at the police department parking lot, the police crime parking lot, we'll be bringing that to you at some point in the future for authorization forward. We received the pain California grant, uh, for the Valley Park, over Valley and Aspen area, that's going on well, by the way, but it's gonna have a finance side, uh, soccer field, so we're slowly getting into the, the recreation world. And then also working closely with our Chamber of Commerce and Economic, uh, Greater Tech Economic Development Council. And then public works, we've got Don and, and Tyler, continuing the safe working environment. So on January twenty-fourth, just coming up here very soon, knock on wood, we will be celebrating one thousand days with no lost time accidents. That's a big deal. And so we want to continue that, you know, that, that thought process, that encouragement, we'll be taking the public works guys to lunch in celebration of that, thanking them for that, but that, that's a big deal because it continues to keep our insurance and workers comp, and those things, those premiums, that overhead that is so costly to businesses, because we are a business at a minimum. And then introducing a program, um, named Your Neighborhood, I think, Tyler, was this your idea? Thank you. And that's similar to Chief's idea, but Your Neighborhood would be, you know, where you have a, a public works, um, employee that's responsible for certain areas, kind of like we did when the Hillary tropical storm moved in, we assigned public works employees to certain areas, so they weren't overlapping, they weren't leaving an area unmanned, if you will, or storm drain, clearing, and different things. It worked really well, and so we're looking at a similar program for public works, so that, of course. So that, of course, we'll go wherever we need to go. We have regular maintenance schedules for the entire city. But we thought it would be a little more efficient for, for the employees and the residents to, to know what's, who, who's responsible for their streets also. And then maybe using artificial intelligence for the detection of potholes and pavement conditions. So there's a program out there where you can, maybe we'll put it on the street sweeper and as the street sweeper rolls around town, it's videoing, street signs, graffiti, potholes, those sorts of things. And that data is real-time to Tyler and his crew where they can dispatch somebody. So nothing is left untouched or unmanaged for any amount of time. Because we can't be everywhere. So this is a better, better way to, to manage our streets and roads. And then Key and Maya, we have our communications and community engagement department. We wanna continue to grow and reach out on all of our platforms, the social media platforms. We have just been blessed with, with Key and Maya and the way that they're able to push information out, you know, real-time. Whether it's good, bad or indifferent, we wanna make sure that, that the citizens understand who we are, what we're doing, when we're doing it, why we're doing it. So it's really worked well. We wanna continue to do more of that. And then recreational opportunities. I know Key and Tyler have been working closely together with Pickleball because of what they do and, you know, our city with assets and infrastructure there. And then expanding the community collaborations. I think the hometown Christmas is a perfect example of community collaborations where we, we work well with nonprofits. You know, the, we talk about small businesses in the city of Tehachapi, but nonprofits in the city of Tehachapi. We're so blessed to have so many people that are ready, willing and able to volunteer their time and give their money towards a better community. And, you know, you can tell Tehachapi is a fine city and I couldn't be more proud. So thank you for your time and that's what I had for you this evening.
Thank you, Greg. We'll go to the council member reports.
That's a hard act to follow, but great.
I know.
Just in for, but congrats to all the departments, every, every employee that, very proud of everyone. Yes. For successfully here.
Yes, thank you for making our city a great city, Tehachapi as well.
All of you.
Yeah, Happy New Year to everybody. Over Christmas, I had the opportunity to meet with my family and friends and really got to talk about what's going on in Tehachapi. And the sense of community here is fantastic. And I wanted to point out to Claire Scotty's here. She was president of the Chamber of Commerce. And today, the Chamber of Commerce had a great event where nonprofits got together and it's a great example of collaboration in the community. But people who love their community invest their time in nonprofits and the nonprofits are fantastic because they identify the problems, they create the solutions and they implement it. Whether it's for elementary school kids who are getting behind and reading or seniors. And I, I know we had, I probably missed it, but we had Rotary, CASA, Tehachapi Cancer Center, American Legion, Family Life Pregnancy Center, amateur radio. And I'm gonna screw that one up. It's T A R A, correct?
Yeah.
Friends, the Library Association, the Train Depot, Counseling Center and more. And everyone was so excited to talk about what they do to help the community. And it's just, it's fantastic to, to serve this community. Very excited for this year.
All right, this time Susan Wiggins.
Well, I'm moving. This is my grand announcement. I, when I moved to Tehachapi, I grew up in Mojave. I moved up here to, I got married to Ed Wiggins and I thought I was going to die here. But my children and my new little grandbaby who's seven months old, they're all in, moving to Pennsylvania. My daughter started all this when she got married to her childhood sweetheart, who was also my son's best friend. And anyway, one thing led to another. And so we're, I, I'm looking forward to it. I'm also scared. I've been told that whether it's not any worse in Warren than it is here. So if that's not true, I will write back to all of you, I promise. But I've, I've really counted it as an honor to be able to serve on the city council. We've had growing pains, we've had death threats, we've had all kinds of silly things, but we're stable. And, and we do a good job. And our, we could not be prouder of our city staff, every one of you. Because when something, when you say it's gonna get done, it gets done. So I'm really gonna miss everyone. I've been here, oh, twenty-three years. And like I said, I thought I would move and that would be it. And now I've had to get rid of things, which. Clean your house every year. It's horrible to have to do all that stuff. So, but I wanna thank all of you for supporting me and I've, I've enjoyed it and I'm just starting another chapter, so.
And so if I would like to, if I can add, I know that your, your date for leaving is fluctuating a bit. So I'd like to maybe work with you and then when you actually do leave, a letter of resignation at that point, then you can bring it to council. But as far as I can tell, you will remain on the council until you leave?
The day I fly.
So you're not resigning tonight, but you, you will be resigning in the near future.
Yeah, within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I had a little, wanna tell Susan, when I first got on the council, she was very helpful. She's always giving me an earful when I mess up or something, giving me direction and.
Elbows.
Elbows, yeah. So I'm not gonna miss that, but I am. I work in Mojave and I worked with her brother many years ago. Our different things, different in Mojave. When I got involved with city council, he says, well, you're gonna work with my sister. And I go, who's your sister? And you told me Susan Wiggins on it. Oh, great. No.
Nothing like it.
It's been a lot of, it's been an adventure working with Susan. And I know there's a lot of people, a lot of things that you've accomplished through your career here and we wanna wish you all the best in your move and I'm sure we'll see you back, I hope.
I, I've told everybody, there's airplanes, it's okay.
As the mayor, I got to do something pretty unusual. On January sixth, I was invited to speak at one of our members of our community's hundredth birthday. So it's something you get to do every day. So I got to go to Lorraine Carter's hundredth birthday celebration they had at Mount Air Estate. It was a really neat adventure to see all her family. She had a lot of family there to speak and she asked me to speak and we presented her with a, a certificate of appreciation from the city. And it's really neat to see that, get to do that. There's, that's the fun thing to get to do as the mayor. And so I thought that was pretty awesome. But had a great holiday season with everybody and kind of slowing down from all the adventures that we had. Oh, 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 yeah. So looking forward to this next year. Appreciate all city, our crew at the city and everything that you guys do. Always out there, when we guys see you, we're getting stuff cleaned up. Appreciate the management, Mr. Garrett and his crew. Everything that we, and I love living in Tehachapi and I love to serve. So with that being said, we'll adjourn and we're gonna go into closed session. And after that, if we have anything, we'll come back and announce it. Meeting.